Welcome to the Lake Mills City Council Meeting, July 20th. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Misty?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidno? Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So, the next step here is the approval of the City Council minutes of June 15th, 2021, and the City Council work sessions of June 17th, 22nd, and 29th.
I have a slight minutes correction from the last City Council meeting underneath the story block.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Ms. Quidno.
Do we need a motion? We would need a motion and we can amend, yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes for the 6:15 meeting and for the work sessions on 6:17, 6:22, and 6:29. Second.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment?
There was an amendment.
There's not an amendment?
I hadn't said anything because Misty can't hear me.
So at this point, you're gonna ask for an amendment?
Can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you. Okay, Michelle, we're looking for a motion to amend at this point.
I move to amend the June 15th City Council meeting minutes.
Is your second?
To include, I'm listening to myself in my ear, it's really annoying, to include the correction of now, at the end of story block, that I voted "now" to voting "no."
That sounds like the spirit was there.
Yeah.
I don't know if a motion to amend is necessary there.
Sorry for all of that.
This just isn't working very well.
No, it does not.
What's the, what do we do about this technology issue? Can we remove?
We're without technology.
Yeah.
Is it that mic over there that's turned on?
These are music guys.
All right, so we'll keep pushing forward here. It sounds like there's no need to amend for that graphical error. So, there's a motion on the table to approve the minutes. Is there any other discussion? All right, give us a roll call vote.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
All right, correspondence from the community? I'll start with, is it that now?
Yes, I had some correspondence regarding the, the new part of Sandy Beach with regard to the launch, as well as some concerns and questions about what was going to be built in and around the Sandy Beach area, and what was going to happen to Shady Side of Sandy That's pretty much it.
All right. Mrs. Bishop, any correspondence?
Yes, I also had multiple correspondence about Sandy Beach and some suggestions and points of view for what is appropriate there. I also had correspondence about the ongoing construction on Lake Street, primarily about the sidewalk construction and the grading issues that are occurring that are holding up one specific portion of the sidewalk.
All right, Mr. Fields?
I had similar correspondence on Sandy Beach. Also had John give me a call yesterday to try and catch up with me, we're playing phone tag. He wanted to discuss the Sandy Beach project. I just haven't made contact back with him yet, we're leaving each other messages.
All right, Mrs. Curler?
Similar several contacts regarding Sandy Beach, both the restaurant, the trees and the east side of the property. One contact asking about the ownership of the median between mains, or on North Main Street, between the Walgreens and the BP, which Steve Wilkie has informed me is owned by the state and maintained by the county, but the Citizen Express said it was unsightly at the entrance to the city. And then one contact about wanting to make sure that Big Santa will be back.
All right, I had similar contacts. One additional was a concern about Sandy Beach trailer parking. On the weekends that the amount gets pretty big, I think there was about 20 trailers on Sunday, so a lot of trailers there. All right, any other discussion? So we'll move forward to questions and public comment. Since there's no public hearing today, the public is encouraged to address the councils this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on agenda. If you register with the city before the meeting, you can call to order. State's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when stating your comment. If you fell out of the minutes, you can apply. All right, the floor is open. Anybody want to speak today?
Hopefully the technology will bear with me here.
It's good.
Hi, my name is Jim Noga. I live at 15A Sandy Beach, or 15A Hilltop Terrace in the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park Association. I am the president of the homeowners association there. I'm here to address the item on the agenda with regard to the restaurant. I just want to positively state that we are very much in favor of a restaurant on the beach. The one thing I would like to address is the fact that we would like to keep it as family-friendly as possible. We all miss the sandbar. We miss the ambiance of being able to have a dinner, look out over the lake, and not necessarily be inundated with boats, loud music, jet skis, and those kinds of things. When you look at other lakes that have expanded their restaurants in the area, it has been inundated with young people and rowdiness. We would like to keep it as much as possible in the family style that this whole community has been enjoying for years. I, myself, and my family have been coming to Lake Mills for over 50 years right now, and we'd love to keep it that way. Just like to keep it that short. And, one more thing, if there's any possibility of having input from our association, we would love to be included in that. Again, thank you.
Any questions? All right, any other comments from the gallery? How about anybody that might be online today? All right, thank you, Jim. All right, moving forward, City Manager Report. Steve?
You were provided with several documents, the capital budget, the general fund budget, check registers, and the treasurers' reports, and the police reports. Are there any questions? The, I know we received a couple of questions from council members about the capital budget. Capital budget doesn't have a straight flow to it, it kinda has a high expenditure amount at the beginning of the year, and then it kinda slows down, so it goes up. There are also some times where something got put into it and it'll get transferred out, so you need to watch it over the course of several months to see what actually is occurring. There are also several projects, like the Sandy Beach Boat Launch, which you'll see on there, has a zero budgeted amount. What happens is it was budgeted last year, wasn't completed on time, and so we moved the funds that were available to a reserve account, but it's still as budget, billed as a capital expense, so even though the money's there and it doesn't hit this year's budget, we show it in there. So that kinda gives you a, kind of a skewed view of what's going on in there. So you kinda have to be able to follow what's happened last year and this year. So, that's one of the items. Some of the check registers, there was a big check written to the local government investment pool for $1.1 million, and it said "tax settlement." Tax settlement is a term that we use when the county pays us the property taxes that have been collected. So, whenever we, our revenue stream is like a lot of money in February and a lot of money in August, because we get those two settlements at that period of time. So, if you saw our annual general fund revenue fund, it goes February and it comes down, and it goes back up in August, and it comes down. That money is put in that pool, and then it's dispersed to other accounts as appropriate for what's going on in the city. So, it's really an accounting move by Betsy to be able to handle all the funds that come in and then disperse them appropriately. Some of that'll be discussed further tonight as we discuss the new funds being created. So, these are gonna be pretty common questions, so just keep emailing me. I'll try and figure out what's going on and get back to you.
Thank you, yes.
I think Lisa had her hand up first.
Go ahead.
I asked Steve this, and he answered it by email, so I guess just to share with everybody, I had asked, being on the library board, I was particularly interested in the library expansion fund and the library endowment, so maybe you can just share, you know, what you told me, what the sources and purpose of those are.
The library endowment fund was money that was given to the city that was to be held, and only the interest could be used for library projects. The library expansion fund is funds that are donated to the city that can be used totally for the expansion of the library. And so they're a little bit different. Some people can donate to the endowment fund separate, so you'll have multiple endowments, so the 61,000 could grow to like 300,000 or 400,000, but the only way you generate money off of that is the interest. That money has to stay in that account, and then the interest could be moved to the library expansion account. And so that's how those two funds kinda work.
Mr. Wilkie, on the standard check register, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Pages 7, 8, and 11, there were notations for a local government interest. I don't think that's what you were first mentioning, the amounts were for about 3,900 and 4,100 for one of the other ones. What are those for?
What page? 11, you said?
7, 8, and 11, there were three different light items for local government investment. So if you were to start at page 7, it's the second line down for 3,980.
Page 7 of 25 on the standard check register?
No, I apologize, 7 of 11. For the utilities, I should've led with that, my bad.
Turn your mic on, Betsy.
It's most likely impact fees. So we collect those and have to keep them in a specific fund that we keep at the LGIP accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilkie, on the capital budget as far as the boat launch goes, so those funds were reserved last year, they weren't used, and that's why we're seeing it as the project got finished this year. So all those, all those funds were already set aside and reserved, how does, how does that work?
It was budgeted in '20, and at the end of the year, we still had a lot of money left and a lot of expenses left. So what we do is we have the council create a reserve fund to move that money into, and then that's used to finish paying off the debt. So it, it's kind of a 20, it's kind of a 20-budgeted item, but it ends up being multiple years for But it counts against the other year, not this year, and it's a capital item, so it's not relevant.
But it still shows on the capital budget for this year?
Yeah, we try and keep track of it, so we wanna know what's going on, and so it pops up, because it's being recorded into the books now.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes.
Okay, now I'm moving into the standard check register with the 25 pages. I'm on page 5, Mr. Wilkie or Ms. Milbrath, and I have second light item for the Muscular Dystrophy Association for a fundraiser for 4.8, yeah, 4,800.
I believe that was some funds that the fire department collected for a specific
We'll just have to check, because I'm not absolutely sure. But that looks like it was coming out of the firefighters' special fund for fundraising.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Moving on to item 8, because I understand there's a basketball game tonight. Council members' board report and acceptance of May 17th Library Board and June 8th Public Works Board Minutes. Have a motion?
I move to accept the library. We don't need a motion for these.
We don't need a motion? We just acknowledge that they're...
Put them on file.
Yes.
Great. Does anybody have any questions on that? All right, we'll get to that basketball game yet. So, moving on to council business, miscellaneous licenses. The first one is a private well license with the Lake Mills Golf Club. Any comment on that, Misty? Go ahead.
I was just gonna make a motion to approve the private well permit for Lake Mills Golf.
Second.
All right, so motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any discussion, or is there any background on this?
We're required by state statute to license all the private wells in the city and have them inspected annually and tested. Normally, they're done in June. Once in a while, we get a couple stragglers. This one is, I think, the last one for the year, and it looks like it's satisfactory, and Misty has brought it forward. All the permits have to be filed with the city clerk.
That's all correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
All right, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is application for a mobile home park license. We're reviewing the Lakeland. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the application for mobile home park license for Lakeland MHC.
All right, so a motion by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Ms. Quidno. Is there any background information on this?
Kind of similar, state statute requires that these licenses be collected and they filed with, they're required to file at the clerk. Nothing unusual about the license or the process.
Any questions?
I guess just a question, does the city ordinance then require that the council approve each of these?
I would say that we prefer that all the licenses be approved by the council, and I believe that, I don't know that state statute does, but city, standard city process does.
And this is another, this is another straggler as well. You guys have already approved all the others in that last round. This one, that owner actually has two, and they missed one of the applications, so this one just got, was just, came in a little bit later.
Any other questions? Seeing, is that a question? Nope, that's all right. Seeing none, let's move to a roll call.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Thank you. All right, moving to B, Resolution 2136. This is a special recognition of city service for Rob Getz. Misty, can you read the resolution?
Would you like the title, as we typically do, or do you want this one in full because of the public service?
I want this one in full.
Okay. Resolution 21-36.
Hang on, Misty. All right, we're good to go.
Resolution 21-36, an appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills from Rob Getz, where as the City Council, the city of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Rob Getz for his years of loyal service to the city of Lake Mills and its citizens, and where as Rob Getz has served as Facilities and Grounds Director of the city, with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents and expertise for the past 24 years, and where as Rob Getz has devoted numerous hours to provide positive management to the Facilities and Grounds Department while exhibiting the idealism, loyalty, and dedication to the city, and enthusiasm for his profession, and where as Rob Getz's attention to excellence, professionalism, and integrity have made a meaningful and lasting contribution to the city of Lake Mills, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Rob Getz and extends best wishes for enjoyable retirement.
All right, can I have a motion?
I want to adopt the Resolution 21-36, an appreciation of the public service that Rob Getz has given us in the last 24 years.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Quidno, second by Mrs. Bishop. Is there any comment?
Well, I know that we all appreciate working with Rob. He's been around a long time and brought a lot of professionalism to the department. He got everything. Let me put it this way, he got things done, and I suppose that's the most important part about being the department head. He does wanna have a minute to say something, so we would appreciate allowing him to speak and be big man on campus one more time.
We always need to do something to allow him to talk.
How is it now? The, the motion on the floor is for the resolution. They wanna know if there needs to be a motion to allow Rob to speak.
It's a motion by Ms. Quidno to allow Rob to speak. It was a second by Mrs. Curler, Ms. Curler. Can we have just a raise of hands, everybody in favor? All right, Rob, the floor is yours, thank you.
Good, thank you, everybody. Just wanna say, 24 years flew by here. Me and my wife, Kelly, were driving down here, we're talking about it, and I remember coming with my two-year-old daughter and my six-year-old son the day I was, got in the position. 24 years later, here I am, walking out the door. It was been enjoyment working for the city of Lake Mills. The city is outstanding. The city staff is very dedicated, very intelligent, very motivated. I think you have a great thing going on here with the city. I think the addition of Eric is gonna be outstanding also. So with that, I thank everybody, you know, that I've met, worked with, there's so many people in the public, so many council members throughout the course of time, so many staff members, so many of my employees that I've hired, you know, you just can't conceivably go through all of them. So I'd just like to thank everybody, and I'm not gonna miss the drive coming down here. So with that, I would like to go watch the Bucks game, so thanks again.
Thank you, Rob. Is there any other comments?
Just wanna say thank you, Mr. Getz, for sticking out for those 24 years. We definitely appreciate your service, and I really do hope you get to enjoy your retirement. I'm sure it's a little bittersweet, but go forth and have some fun, okay? Go watch your Bucks game.
She wishes you well and thanks you for the 24 years.
Yes, thank you, thanks, Michelle.
Those are some taking care of trees. Well, then you're gonna have fun.
I also wanted to thank you. I know earlier this month, we were in a meeting together, and I commented that you're too young to retire, and I still stand by that, but thank you and congratulations.
Thanks, Rob, it's been fun working with you.
All the best, Rob, congratulations.
Thank you, Rob, for helping you get comfortable on the task force in short notice.
You got it.
All right, any other comments? Yes, Eric? All right. I think we've covered it. Let's do a roll call vote on this. Resolution 2138, was it?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. I'll just offer you a quick handshake. All right, moving on. Item C on the agenda. Discuss the decision on the Rock Lake Cemetery plot. It's currently tabled. So I guess we got to pull that off, being off the, off the table and bring it up for discussion.
So, Mr. President, I'll make an attempt at the right language for this, so I make a motion that we remove this item from the table and amend it to approve motion 21 dash seven dash two dash one regarding the Rock Lake Cemetery plot.
I'll second.
Awesome. I think that was a, a great, a great motion there. So, a motion by Mrs. Curler, a second by Mr. Fields. All right, so we tabled this and we're bringing it back. I believe we were wanting to get some survey information to move this forward. Is there some comment on, on that?
Did you vote to bring it off the table?
Oh, excuse me. Can we have a roll call vote?
Yeah, I just want to clarify because the motion was to remove it from the table and approve it, so I think what we should do is just do the motion to remove it from the table, vote on it, and then there would be another motion to approve it. I believe, I'm not in there, so I can't see Dan's face right now, but that's my understanding of how this.
Yeah, he would prefer that, but it would be to, to approve it as amended. So the first one would be to remove it from the table.
So the first motion would be just remove it from the table.
So if you were willing to make that motion, a second.
I'll amend my original motion, and I will simply make a motion to remove this, the Rock Lake Cemetery plot item from the table.
No, I'll second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Curler, a second by Mr. Fields. Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. It's now off the table.
All right, so we need a motion on the amend, amended motion.
Motion to approve the amended motion. I'll get the number for you in a second, because I just lost it. Twenty-one dash seven dash two dash one.
Hang on, I'm just making sure the number's right. Misty, was number right?
Yes, it was.
All right, fantastic. All right, so the motion was by Mrs. Bishop and the second was Mrs. Quidnow.
Would you mind, Mr. Waters, if I read the title at this point as well?
That'd be great, thank you.
Motion 21 dash seven dash two dash one, plot approval, Rock Lake Cemetery plot 2021.
All right. So there's a motion. Now we can have a discussion?
We tabled it to correct some minor information on it and get the easements on it. Those have all been corrected and are part of the plot, so it's ready to be approved tonight for a submittal to the county.
So any questions? Comment? Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
I have two things, so if nobody else had any. For the utility and sidewalk easement agreement, do we need to add in this motion and amend it to give you authorization to sign that, Mr. Wilkie, on behalf of the city, or is that just part and parcel with what we're already approving? I understand. Now, for parcel, should we add a parcel number to this motion so that it is clear which piece of land we're referring to? And if so, I just did not have that parcel number for the actual cemetery, since the only number given, I think, was for the easement. I'm sorry, Mr. Drescher, I didn't hear that.
He said the parcel number's in the easement.
Oh, for the easement, yes. We need a parcel number for the actual piece of land at the easement.
Can you turn that off?
No, I won't make it more difficult if you think that's sufficient. Thank you, Mr. Drescher.
Mr. Drescher, can you mute your microphone? There we go. I'm sorry, did you get your question answered?
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, I just had a question about the easement itself. Just, it struck me as unusual that Mr. Wilkie is signing on behalf of both parties, but is that just kind of an unusual situation because the easement is being given from the city to the utility?
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, let's move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. All right, discussion and decision on acceptance of donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation Wallace Park Storywalk currently tabled, so we'll need to pull this off the table?
I'm trying to move that we pull the storywalk off of the table.
All right, second?
I'll second that.
So motion by Ms. Quidnow and a second by Mrs. Curler. And then we'll need a motion to accept the new. Oh, excuse me, thank you. I'm getting ahead of myself tonight. I want to get to that basketball game. All right. Can we have a roll call vote for the, pulling it off the table?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. All right, so the motion to move forward here. See, we got the number?
I can read the title now, which has the number in it.
Fantastic.
City Council motion 21 dash seven dash two dash two, accepting the donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation of funds to install a storywalk at Wallace Park.
I'll make a motion that we approve, motion 21 dash seven dash two dash two regarding the donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation for a storywalk at Wallace Park.
All right, motion by Mrs. Curler, a second by Ms. Quidnow. All right, is there any comment or questions or any briefs on? I guess there was a revision done to the, the plan. So why was that revision done and what makes, moving forward makes sense at this point?
No, I think the plan is pretty much as it was originally proposed. Eric went out and did a bunch of work at looking at the, the trails and the locations and the construction methods. And he reviewed other options, and he wrote a memo to such point and provided all the information that I felt was required. He worked with Gerard and Becca. And they have agreed that this is the spot they want. I think they've provided enough information to make it reasonable to, to expect that this is a, a reasonable move. Eric is here, if you want to ask him any questions.
Eric, did the, did the trail actually move? I, I thought at first it was going through the forest. Now it seems like it's going around the forest.
The, the plan hasn't changed at all. I think the section that you're seeing going around, maybe it wasn't highlighted originally on the original map, but the section that goes through the forest is basically the eastern portion of the trail that goes through. It was always in the plans that would go on the north, eastern, and southern perimeter of the forest as well. So plans haven't been altered. I just did another overlay on an aerial map.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? You.
I mostly just wanted to say thanks, Eric, for taking a look at some of the other options like the Wellens Park. I appreciate you kind of laying out why, you know, the other alternatives were not as good, and I also appreciate your attention to a dead tree, a tree fort, and, you know, some of the other things that will have to be dealt with, so thank you for that.
Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Schreiner, I had concerns last time about what maintenance would be required by the Parks Department, and I think you addressed some of that here in your memo, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comment? All right, let's move forward with the roll call vote.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. Item E, discussion and decision on food services at Sandy Beach. Can you read the motion?
City Council motion 21 dash seven dash two dash three, expressing the city council's desire to provide food service at Sandy Beach Park and authorizing the city manager to prepare requests or proposals for alternatives regarding provision of food service at Sandy Beach Park.
I move to approve motion 21 dash seven dash two dash three.
All right, motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any discussion or questions? Go ahead, Steve.
I addressed the two items that are out there. You and I and Dan met, and we went over this motion, and we tried to leave the preparation of the RFP as open as possible so that we could do a lot of research, determine how we wanted to structure it, not limiting ourselves to some preconceived concept until after some point. We would bring the RFP back and that it would either be approved or modified at the council level. Mrs. Bishop provided a alternate that had more detail, which we've already discussed, and, and is consistent with what we thought would probably be the options. So you have those two alternates there. Right now, this one is kind of open, the other one is, is much more tight. And so it, it's just a, a little bit of a difference on the opinion of, you know, I didn't feel like, you and I and Dan discussed that we didn't feel like we, we were expert enough to be able to determine exactly what kind of concepts would come in, so we tried to leave it a little more open. We haven't done any research into any RFPs. Maybe what we come up with is exactly what Catherine provided and, and would be great. But that was our thinking at the time, so that's just the way the motion was structured at this point.
Yeah, the idea was to, to get feedback from different people and the different ideas and understand because we don't have all the answers at this point, and it'd be nice to, to see what's out there and, and be able to act upon that, or at least listen to the ideas, so. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Ms. Curler, if you can turn your microphone on, please.
Sorry, question first, Steve Wilkie. Does the original motion contemplate either a city-owned building or a private-owned building? I was a little unclear on the wording of that.
The motion that's up right now tries to incorporate every possible concept that would be out there that was beyond our, so it, it could be a city-owned billing, it could be a privately-owned billing on city property. It could be, what we're trying to do is do enough research and talk to enough people to make it open enough so that we allow the people who do this type of work to give us the best type of proposal possible. You know, the second you start throwing out all kinds of details, you, you start eliminating some options, and I, I'm not sure that we would, but I'm not professional enough in this field to know that, to know what's best, so I tried to think that maybe if we kept it real broad, we would get as many creative ideas as we could possibly get from people who do this for a living, you know, run restaurants.
And then I just want to clarify, in case anyone who's listening and doesn't know, RFP stands for request for proposal.
Yeah. We, we tend to make that mistake in our profession. We tend to use a lot of terms that are very indigenous or to our profession, and people don't understand what we mean when we're talking. We just run right on, so.
Do you want to kind of review the next steps after this then, that, because we kind of walked through them at the work session, but just so everybody listening is, gets the big picture, hopefully?
We're going to do a request for proposal, so what I mean by that is, is we're going to sit down and try and write a request for proposal, so. You remember, we, we did the going for refuse and recycling. And we sit down and we go through and we try and figure out what all the conditions are, and then how to structure asking people to provide us with ideas for how to provide food service at that site. And so what we're going to try and do is structure it so that we get as many options as possible from as many different people out there, so. I, you know, if it's a food pod with, with multiple food trucks in it, or if it's a restaurant that leases for 99 years, or anything in between, I would, I would hope that they would feel comfortable enough saying that this request for proposals is open enough that we can, we can put something together and, and be competitive.
I just want to clarify, you're making the, the question for proposals need to be done by people who are going to do the, the business or, or take. or take on that responsibility? Or are you looking for... Are you going to get inundated with different types of ideas that may or may not have... That they may not have the foundation that you're looking for? So I just wanted to be clear on where that Request for Proposal is going to be coming from? And the kind of people are you looking to get it from?
We actually write the Request for Proposals. And then we bring it back to you and you review it. And then, once you've approved it, we send it out and advertise it in places that we believe people will... That are in the profession will see it. We also have groups of people that we send it to. So we've had a lot of contact for people who are already interested in it. We also know, you know, that there are other companies that are interested in this type of proposal and other places that may be interested in here. So it's very similar to... Like when we do a Request for Professional Engineering Services, we put it in the paper. We put it in several professional journals. And then we send it to every engineering company who's ever dropped a card off here. And that's kind of what it does. So we're going to write an RFP, a Request for Proposals, that we will then send out that tries to encourage them to provide us with the most creative concepts they can for running a restaurant down there.
Okay, I think the current motion as drafted is too broad just having or authorizing the city manager to go forth and set out an RFP. And I think some of the questions here from our own council members show the confusion and just how broad that is. And my concern is that without setting some parameters on what the RFP should include is that by opening up everything with a sign, you just, you have too much information. There's too much time that this will take. Whereas if we set some parameters, I believe what I've offered and have proposed and then their baseline parameters, I don't think they're going to set a ceiling or cap on anybody's creativity or the research that the city staff does want to do as long as we say, here is our vision as the city council for what we want this to look like using these very minimum set of guidelines. And so with that, Mr. Waters, unless there was other discussion, I'm ready to make that amendment. So I'm going to go ahead and propose... I had it written down, so I stayed the right way. I move to amend Motion Twenty One Dash Seven Dash Two Dash Three with the draft amendment that I prepared and previously emailed to the council today. Does everyone have a copy of that? And if not, I can provide some.
Yes.
Okay. Here's one copy from Mr. Fields. May I pass that down? Does anyone else need a copy? Or the public or city staff? Okay. There's one more. I emailed it to her, but, there you go. You got it. That's easy. That's correct. Yes, amend consistent with what I've previously prepared. And I can give a quick summary of that if you would like, or we can wait for the second and the vote.
I'll second the motion.
All right, there's a motion to amend with a second. I know it's been made public to the council, but does something like this need to be read in its entirety, Dan? All right. So there was a motion by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Ms. Curler. Why don't you give a recap? And then we'll vote for the amendment or the, yeah, the motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. The Cliff Notes version of my amendment would be to give some parameters to the city manager in preparing the RFP. Some of those parameters include that he gives us a copy of the RFP for review and approval no later than the second meeting in September. So that was a timeline. Other considerations include requirements for applicants to be in the business of restaurateur-ing, to have a plan for the building development and operation of a restaurant, to be willing to enter into a long-term lease to provide stability for the endeavor, also to consider the family nature of the restaurant, the historic nature of Lake Mills and Rock Lake, and generally to have certain standards and hours of operation that would be beneficial to the users of the lake. And again, those were baseline of Friday, Saturday, Sunday, some holidays over the summer with a plan for operation during the rest of the year, bonus points for a local developer and for, you know, if they could consider other things such as beer and liquor license and just other considerations. So I think that's the Cliff Notes version. I hope I did that quickly. If there's anything else required, let me know.
Is there any questions? Or comment, I should say?
I have a couple of comments. I guess I, you know, number one, thank you for putting this together because I think if we can give a little bit of additional direction to staff, I think that will save us time later so that we don't get, you know, maybe we'll get dozens instead of hundreds of submittals if the applicants have a little bit better idea of the kinds of things that we're looking for. Having said that, I think some of the elements are maybe a little bit too prescriptive, like what days of the week you have to serve lunch and dinner. I'm not sure that we have to be that specific about those. I do particularly like E, F, and G under number three because I think that really kind of frames our vision. And I guess, hopefully, it's shared by all five of us, but I agree with those three items that I think we do want it to be family-oriented. We want it to be in keeping with, you know, a beach setting somewhat, you know, as we've had in the past. So some of the other elements of it, A, I'm a little bit concerned, I guess, that it seems to suggest... Three A seems to suggest that it would only be a lease of property. And that seems to foreclose the option of the city building the restaurant, and I'd like to leave both of those options open. So that's, I guess, that's kind of my take on that.
Yes, Mr. Fields?
Yeah, I'm kind of similar, but very good document. I like it. I'm looking at D. And where we say preference is going to be given to breakfast service and stuff, we're looking for people to kind of give us ideas if it's even feasible, if they could do something like that. So I would struggle saying that we're going to give an option preference at this point. We're not that far into it. Where I don't want to restrict us too much. Where, does that make sense? Where, you know, that location might not be feasible for a breakfast location versus competing against downtown on a square.
Sure, may I, Mr. Waters?
Sure.
Mr. Fields, yes, that certainly makes sense. And Ms. Curler as well. I tried to do the ground lease option typically, one, long-term leases to provide stability typically for the ground lease, two, anything that the builder or restaurateur builds would then turn over to the city once the lease is over. So the city would end up owning that and at no real cost to us because somebody else has built it and they've been paying rent all along. So I felt like further details of that lease could be negotiated later. I didn't want to make it too constrictive. And then, Mr. Fields, for D, I understand with the breakfast option and maybe preferences isn't the right word. So maybe I would, there could be another amendment after the fact to change some of that language. But I did want to look at the big picture of what could be possible here. So that was the reason for that language. But that's just my position.
Also, I'd like to thank you, too, as far as Mrs. Bishop, for putting this all together. I think maybe it might be one step ahead that I'd like to hear the different ideas and hear what's available. I don't have all the answers at this point. Would like to review all the available options personally. So I kind of lean towards the original motion. But we can move forward here on this amendment and go from there. Steve, do you have something? Go ahead, Steve.
Do we know who's going to write it by September 2nd?
I think it says you are.
There's no way I'm going to have a RFP ready on September 2nd.
Second meeting, I think it's September, second...
Yeah, you know...
You can apply for an extension.
Ms. Curler?
I was actually going to ask that. What is your anticipated timeline or a realistic timeline? Because I appreciate Mrs. Bishop's attempt to just kind of keep things moving along. And we know that people are waiting, you know, for foods, more definitive food service down there. So what is a realistic timeline?
Well, November, the first meeting in November, the budget will be done. So you're going to probably have at least three, maybe four or five meetings on the budget. You also have five other items that you've asked to have taken care of between now and then. And then you want a... You know, the last RFP took me 10 months. So I'm thinking at least six because I, you know, there are so many other things that are going to be going on in that time period that it gets hard to provide it, especially this time of year. You know, if you were giving it to me in November and saying you wanted it done by February, that'd be a lot easier because it's a little bit slower that time of year. But it also depends on how complicated it gets. I've never done a food one like this. I don't know where to start. You know, we kick out engineering RFPs in five days. But we've done those for 35 years. This one's a little bit more complicated than that, so... I, you know, I'll shoot for September, the second meeting in September. But I'm going to need an extension, probably.
So in thinking about the timeline, and I think the reason why Mrs. Bishop wanted to expedite the process is to understand what things need to happen in order to move the Sandy Beach process forward faster so that we're not delaying the phases that are happening at Sandy Beach any longer than they already have been just because obviously COVID should have something to do with it. But the public is asked to explore what's coming. And I think what we're wanting to know is what can we do to move that process along? And how does that process affect the timeline and the construction and all of the other things that we know have to happen? Should there be, you know, infrastructure and all of that? Should there need to be that put in place?
Even with the level of restriction on here, you still have a ton of options. And for me to say that... You know, if they come in and they lease the property, we lease some of the property and they build the building, it could be done by this time next year. If we end up deciding, coming to an agreement where we build the building and they lease it from us, that brings in a whole new set of issues because then we're going to have to go to referendum and we're going to have to go through all kinds of different budgeting issues. And we're going to have, you know... So, and we have a lot of competing items on top of it. So it really then starts to stretch out the process. So... It would be extremely difficult for me to say that I would know. But if we were fortunate enough, let's say I had it done in November and we were able to get it out and bid in January and the contractors, and we picked someone who could build it that year, that would be about as fast as it could go. If we have to go, if we get in a bunch of bids and they all require us to build the billing or our favorite one requires us to build a billing, the soonest we could probably get to a referendum would probably be a special election in August. And if you don't want to go to a special election, then you're looking at either November or April. Well, February could be on the list, but surely April, so... Those are... And then, once you get that done, then you've got to go through the budgeting process and you have to get all the procedures and bond stuff done. And so it could... The shortest time period under some of those processes is probably two and a half years. So you could go from a year to two and a half years, easy.
Just going through that timeline, you didn't have much in here for public comment or if we had a big pushback on things?
Well, I tried to think about the referendum because if you have the referendum, you're going to have to, you're going to have to pretty much do what the school district does. And that's a lot of public meetings, a lot of committee work, and a lot of paper documentation distributed and probably, you know, online and available, so... And generally, that's done by a company like FEH. Or the school district uses several other ones. But there, you know what it's like to be able to get a referendum passed. They, it takes a lot of hitting the right areas to figure out how to make that referendum pass.
Any other questions? All right, so we have an amendment on the floor. It's Mrs. Bishop's amendment as was forwarded to all the council members. So we should do a rule call on the amendment.
I guess I just have a question before we do, if that's okay. So we can vote on the amendment offered by Mrs. Bishop? And if that doesn't pass, we could still bring parts of it back up? Is that correct? Because I'm, I mean, there are a number of aspects of it that I support, but not in its entirety. And so I'm not sure what the best way is to approach that. If I should offer an amendment to the motion or vote and then do...
If the amendment fails, the original motion remains open and you can subsequently motion to amend that.
Okay.
Or there could be a vote on that original motion, however you dictate the process. But you would have to subsequently amend that if you wanted to bring certain ideas in. If this vote, or you could vote to amend or you could motion to amend the amendment.
Or to not get too convoluted, is there a possibility to approve my amendment and then line item strike? If, could there be a further amendment to do that versus amending my amendment? Okay, I understand. Right, I just wanted to understand the process. Thank you.
All right, everybody on the same page there? All right. So the, we're going to have a vote on the amendment. Misty, can you do a rule call?
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno? Motion failed four to one.
Okay, thank you. So we still have the original motion on the table. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to make an additional amendment. Okay, so I would like to amend the motion on the table to include after the last... Let me make sure I'm saying the right thing. To include before the last paragraph, my previous paragraphs, E, F, and G, which would be expressing the need for a family-friendly casual dining environment, a preference to accommodate families and beachgoers, to take into consideration the beach and recreation aspects of the location, and that proposals should demonstrate understanding of the local market and historic nature of Lake Mills and Rock Lake.
I second that motion.
All right, so there's been a new motion to amend by Mrs. Bishop to include E, F, and G from her original amendment. And the second was by Mrs. Cur, Ms. Curler. Is there any discussion on Amendment 2? Yes?
I think this still provides the vision needed for the city staff to make an adequate request for proposal that also gives the respective entrepreneurs and developers guidelines for what we would consider appropriate for development in this area. And so that's why I've made this amendment, and I hope that you vote for it.
So any other questions or comments?
I just would agree. I am very much in support of this. And I agree with Catherine that it gives, gives some vision from the council without being overly prescriptive about what we're looking for and for proposals.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so there's a motion to amend. It's the second amendment that includes sections E, F, and G to the original motion of 21-7-2-3. Seeing no other comments or questions, let's move for a roll call vote.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, Misty, do you have all that? Or do we need to meet after the meeting to clean this up?
No, I believe I have it. It's simply incorporating the language from E, F, and G from the amendments that Mrs. Bishop prepared earlier. So I'll incorporate that in, and then we'll contact you to sign that at a later time, Mr. Waters.
All right, thank you.
Unless I'm, unless I'm wrong in my interpretation of what just occurred.
Yeah, so I'm about to get clarity from Mr. Dresser on, yes, what's the question? So we need to vote on-
The original motion.
The original motion with, with the amended, okay.
As amended.
All right, so we're gonna, is there any questions on that? So one more call for a roll call here, Misty?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Dan, was that a clarinophobe or, okay, great, thank you. All right. So we passed Sandy Beach RFPs, all right. Moving forward, Item F on the agenda is Resolution 21-37, Amending Impact Fees. Misty, can you give us a read on that?
Resolution 21-37, Adjustments to Impact Fees.
I move adoption of Resolution 21-37 regarding adjustment to impact fees.
Second.
All right, there's a motion by Mrs. Curler and a second by Mrs. Bishop. And I am catching up. I remember reviewing this. I just don't remember what it was entirely about. Hang on here. Got it. All right, any questions, questions or comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward with a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Resolution 21-38, Post-Issuance Debt Compliance Policy and Procedures. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 21-38, Adopting Post-Issuance Debt Compliance Policy for Tax Exempt and Tax Advantage Governmental Bonds.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-38, Adopting Post-Issuance Compliance Policy for Tax Exempt and Tax Advantage Governmental Bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Ms. Quidno, second by Mrs. Bishop. So Steve, what's this all about?
They wanna have policies in place that make sure that we follow certain procedures for issuing debt. And so Betsy, you wanna, this has been recommended to us by Corals of Brady, our bond lawyers, and our financial advisors, Ellers. And Betsy can probably comment more on it.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. The, like he said, Ellers and Associates is our financial advisors. And they've recommended that we have a policy and procedures in place. These requirements of the bonds can be very complicated. And they want to make sure, and this is something that can assist us in making sure that we are in compliance. They've recommended this for a couple of years. When we have our, with Standard and Poor, when we do a bond rating, Standard and, a bond issue, Standard and Poor will do a bond rating with us. And that is one of the questions that they ask us. If we have one of these policies and procedures in place, this'll assist us in maybe, you know, making sure we have a most advantageous rating when we do go out for bonds.
All right, any questions or comment? Yes.
Just a quick question for Betsy. On page two of the policy, a little bit more than halfway down, there's a reference to that you and your staff are authorized to expend funds for training. And I was just curious if you have any idea about what that training might cost? Or if there's something that we need to amend in the budget to make sure that that training is supported?
There is information in the contract. Yeah, the agreement.
Your microphone went out. Your microphone went out.
That Ellers would provide training, and then they have a schedule of what the-
Delayed.
Oh. I don't know.
No.
It's not working.
It's about a five-second delay.
Oh, no.
I think you were saying it's in the agreement document.
We'll take it off the air and you can keep talking, okay?
Yes. And about, it's showing about $200 per hour for consultation and training. Ellers works closely with us. If there is any training that should be necessary, that would be easily handled. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 21-38.
Ms. Quidno? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item H, Resolution 21-39, Resolution Establishing a Special Revenue Fund, Donation Fu, Special Revenue Fund, Donation Fund. Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
I move to accept Resolution 21-39, Reestablishing a Special Revenue Fund Known as Donations Fund.
I'll second that.
All right, so there was a motion by Ms. Quidno and a second by Mrs. Curler, Ms. Curler. I guess I should have had, had you read that, Misty, but I think we covered that. We're good. All right, is there, this is, this is dealing with special donations like the Big Santa.
Yes, it's specifically the donations made to the city so that we don't have to worry about past due spending. It avoids our, exceeding our expenditure restraint numbers. So it provides us an opportunity to make additional expenditures that weren't anticipated in the budget in any given year and the legislative cap. Because the Special Revenue Fund won't be under that. And so we can spend donated monies more freely than we would if we had to put them into the general fund.
Go ahead.
Is there something in the form of way that we're going to see itemizing or keeping very good documentation of how that is going to be spent? As noted from previous conversations earlier in this meeting where Ms. Bishop asked a question about what certain funds were being used for and if there wasn't real quick clarity just yet. So with something like this, that's a little bit more arbitrary, making sure that we are documenting how that's being spent? And is that a city council approval? Maybe that we would make sure that those funds are being used appropriately?
The, we already have multiple special revenue funds, and they're accounted for by line item and they're budgeted. So it's pretty much consistent with that. The other item was a, statutorily, we're required to hold the funds for the fire department fundraising activities. But they really have full control of those funds. So a lot of times, the expenditures come in as long as they're authorized by the appropriate people on the signatures. The bookkeeper expensed it. So a lot of times, Betsy and I don't even know what's going on. Because it's a fund controlled by a group other than us, we have to handle the money. In this case, no, it would be, it would be budgeted. You would know what would be donated and where it was going to. Same with Big Santa. In fact, you know, there's an MOU that goes along with it. But for accounting purposes throughout the course of the year, you would be able to see it audited as a special revenue fund. So at the end of the year, you could look at that and say, this is how it was spent. Or you get the, you also see the ins and outs under the treasures report, which is that Excel spreadsheet you had, so.
Yes.
So then by way of example, the $5,100 being donated for the story walk, is that an amount that would go into the special fund?
Yes, we would probably do that in this fund.
Ms. Curler?
I have two questions. One, I think is kind of related to what Catherine just asked, but more broadly, if we vote to approve this tonight, would this be retroactive for the full budget year so that donations that have been already received, you would be able to transfer those over?
The, we create the fund, and then she has, I think there's amended budgets that go along with this too. So one item is create the fund, and then the other one is amend the budget appropriately.
So then our next budget item will basically, our next agenda item will basically do that? Okay, thank you. And then I guess my other thing is more of a comment. When we were reviewing these donations at our last meeting, I think that we did have a little bit of conversation among the council members that it would be helpful to have, maybe to update the donation process so that there's a little clearer, you know, like a donation form, so we know who's donating it, what the purpose is, so then we can thank them, and it's well documented. So I guess that's just a comment that, you know, I hope that that's something that we can improve that process a little bit so it's clear who we're receiving donations from, and then we can thank them appropriately.
Any other questions or comment? All right, seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on Resolution 21-39.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, Resolution 21-40, Misty, can you read that?
Yes, one moment, sorry. Resolution 21-40, Authorizing the City Manager to Direct the Treasure to Amend the Budget Donation Fund.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-40 to amend the 2021 budget to include the donations fund.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler and a second by Mr. Fields. So this goes along with the last motion. It gives the city manager the discretion to, not the discretion, but the, is there authority? Authorization, thank you, to set up the funds. Any questions or comments?
I actually don't set up the funds.
Betsy does.
It authorizes me to direct her to do it.
Right. Any other questions? I'll quit ad libbing, I guess, in the future. All right, let's vote on Resolution 21-40.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item J, Resolution 21-41, Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 21-41, Resolution Establishing a Special Revenue Fund Known as ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act Fund.
Can I have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 21-41, Establishing a Special Revenue Fund Known as ARPA.
All right, a motion by Mrs. Bishop and a second by Ms. Quidno. So the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, can you tell us a little bit more about that, Steve?
Gee, I thought everybody knew. The, these are funds from the federal government distributed to the states and then to the localities. Other bigger cities get it directly, but we don't. We get it distributed through the state. We receive $633,000 worth of funds. So this, that amount of money will be put into this fund. Probably at the next council meeting, we will discuss budget line items for this. And how to expend it over the next, I think, four years. The funds have, you know, specifications from the federal government on how to spend them. They are much broader than I originally thought. So we have some proposals that we will go over at the next meeting on how to, how to budget for that money. Because it's a one-time fund and it's outside the normal budgeting revenues, we put it into its own special account so that we don't hit any expenditure restraint or levy item problems. So it's very clear and will be, you will probably see this one on a more regular basis because of the large amount of funds and the specific line items that will be expended on based on what you decide at the next meeting or sometime this fall.
Thank you for that excellent summary.
Excuse me.
We all know it, but, we all know it, but, hang on. We all know, but I just wanna make sure the viewers knew what was, what this was all about.
Can I make one clarification to what Steve was giving you for information? Can I make one clarification to what Steve was giving you for information? We were awarded $626,000 for the grant. However, the, it's being distributed in two allotments, so we've received half of it. So, we've only received $313,000 at this moment, and then the rest of it will be coming next year.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Curler?
I guess just a question I noticed in some of the League of Wisconsin municipality newsletters, there's been some discussion about, and examples of kinds of things that a community could use these funds for. So, will you, when you bring some things forward, can you just, you know...
You're on now.
Okay, so, the, there's a pretty extensive document provided by the federal government on what you can spend your funds on, and we'll provide that document as part of it. I have, I have three recommendations. We'll see how we clarify it because Dan's been yelling at me.
There are many sources that are available, and I'd be happy to provide stuff.
And the League has provided a lot of good information, so if you've been reading their documents, they have provided it. Betsy and I both get it from the Department of Administration. We've got a bunch of documents that come through, and they're, they're a little bit more detailed on exactly how they want to see it expended, and how they want to see it expended and documented. But if you read those documents, particularly in the municipal magazine, they were very clear that you wanted to set up a fund separate from the general fund. And so, that was, that's what we started discussing. Okay, we got to set up a separate fund. What are some of the other funds we want to set up? So, that's when the donation fund came up because it's getting to be more and more of an issue, and then the TID funds. So, that's why we brought them forward at this point in time was, it was highly recommended that we do this fund.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's vote on Resolution 21-41.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Fantastic, all right. Item K, Resolution 21-42. This is the amendment that goes with what we just voted on. So, Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 21-42, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to amend the budget, ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act Fund.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 21-42, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to amend the budget.
Sir, second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Ms. Quidnow, and a second by Ms. Curler. Any questions or comment? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Resolution 21-43. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 21-43, resolution establishing additional separate tax increment district funds.
Is there a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 21-43 to establish additional separate tax increment district funds.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Ms. Quidnow. All right, explanation on this one? Same thing with TIDS?
It's a little more complicated in the fact that we already have a TID fund established. All of the TIDS that we currently have are accounted for in that fund. However, all of the dollars associated with each of these TIDS are in a separate, like, bank account, per se. They're at the local government investment pool. So, there's a separate account. So, all of the dollars are accounted for separately. When we're expending any money, it is accounted for separately. It's just all in one TID fund. There are, when we do entries, there are some entries that are automatically done in the background in our bookkeeping that is making it very complicated for the auditor to pull those apart, and it just makes his job very difficult in accurately tracking all of the entries that have had, happened through the year. So, he has asked us a few times to, can we please separate out all these TIDS? And we keep, you know, we've got two through eight now with two just expiring, and it is very complicated. And so, this is a request to authorize setting up individual funds for each of the TIDS that we have. So, the current TID fund will keep all of the TID number two until everything is audited and expended, and then that one will just lay dormant, and then we're setting up a new TID for each of three through eight.
All right, any questions or comments? Mrs. Bishop?
It's never an excuse that somebody else does it this way, but I am curious, what do other cities do, and where do we lie in the grand scheme of setting up TID funding? I mean, I'm more than happy to take advice from our accountants and auditors and everybody. I just wonder, are we the only ones?
The bigger the city, more often they have them in their own separate accounts. So, and the more TIDS you have, so, ours kind of grew from, we had TID two for a long time, and then we did TID three and four right on top of it. Instead of creating new accounts, we just kind of put them all in this TID account. But it's getting, now that we're up to eight, it's getting more difficult than the auditors. It costs us more to have the auditors have to separate them out. So, they advise us to separate them in this fashion, and it is really something that, with as many TIDS as we have and with as much money that's moving through them, it's advisable to do it this way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 21-43.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item M, this is the accompanying, accompanying Resolution 21-44. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 21-44, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to amend the budget, tax increment district number three through number eight funds.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-44 to amend the 2021 budget to include TID funds for TIDS three through eight.
Second.
All right, so we had a motion by Ms. Curler, and a second by Mrs. Bishop, and a close second by Mr. Fields. All right, is there any discussion or comment? All right, let's move for a roll call vote for Resolution 21-44.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. That was a long list, but we got through it. Thank you. All right, is there any recommendation for future agenda items from the council? Yes, Mrs. Curler?
I just asked Steve if he could, maybe in one of his upcoming managers' report, give us a brief overview of the budget process and the timeline, some of the things that we'll need to be aware of that we'll be doing, especially September and October. Sounds like some additional meetings, so, just to make sure we're prepared.
Go ahead, Steve. It looks like you're ready to address that one.
I had notes here already, study session budget, so I was thinking maybe sometime in August, we could do a study session on, on the budget because it's not going to be a brief update.
Those meetings never are brief. It's a process.
Yeah. So, and then we have the temporary use study session and the cybersecurity study session, and I think there were a couple more, weren't there, Misty?
I don't have a list in front of me right, I'm sorry, Steve.
We also have the, which will be on the next agenda. That'll be a big, big item. And then we have like a, a reduction of financial guarantee for a subdivision. We'll probably have a condo plat approval, and a couple other items, right, Misty?
Yes.
Thanks.
Steve, I missed the one that you said was going to be a big item. What was that?
ARPA, the, the rescue fund.
So, do we need to have a study session for that?
Well, I thought we'd do that on the next agenda because we need to get that done.
Okay.
And so, that'll be, you know, that'll take me a while to get that ready, but I want that one on the next agenda so that we can start moving with, with how we're going to start expending those funds. Because some of them, I think, you know, some of the discussion probably should be relatively quick. Some of it can wait a while, but there are a couple items where you might want to have it done in the next couple of months.
So, for a study session in August, you're suggesting budget. Was there anything else?
Temporary use in cybersecurity, but the budget one by itself will take up a whole study session.
If it's five hours, should we break it into two? Or were you joking?
Let's see what we get through in the first one, and then where we go from there. I sent you an email today with some information on budgets. Did you all receive that PDF? Not all my PDFs make it out.
I haven't reviewed it yet.
Haven't reviewed it.
Okay, well, I'm going to start sending multiples.
Great. More the better.
Yeah, there are definitions and ideas so that we can start having a basis to talk when we hit the budget meeting so that I, I want to kind of do some exercises on, you know, how the levy works, and how expenditure restraint works, and how net new construction works, and how TID closures work, if I ever learn, and those types of things. So, that could be an extensive meeting. Having a good background in those types of things will help.
To answer your question?
It does. Maybe just a follow-up request, if you could, you know, suggest some dates as far in advance as possible because it's still summer and, you know, people taking time off and stuff.
Mrs. Bishop?
I should unmute myself. Along the lines of the budget, I think before we get closer to November, I would like to see a work study session on fees. I don't know if that would be included in your budget study session, but I think that should be looked at. And part of what brought that up for me was working on amending ordinance for sidewalk cafe permits. I've been working with the city attorney on that, and I think that'll be coming up to you guys sometime in August. And I've also been working on an ordinance that would grant the city attorney authority to settle certain claims under a Wisconsin statute section. So, I definitely welcome comment on that, and that'll be coming to you in August as well. Hopefully, Mr. Waters.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions? Did you have anything else, Steve, that you wanted to mention before we adjourn here? You're muted.
The, I've been hearing that a lot tonight. The, the fees one, of course, I've had a memo out for a while. I know Dan's...
We started researching to kind of make that more workable and comprehensive. So, yeah, we're, we're working on that.
I, yeah, I don't think that, we have a pretty extensive slate of fees already, so I don't think that'll have any impact on our levy unless you start moving into areas where we've never collected fees before. So, just, you know, that'll probably be an item I'll send you, too, is to make sure that you know what items are considered levy impact.
All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, adjourn the meeting at 8:56 PM. Thank you.